Okay, we are all here. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we'll go ahead and stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Councilmember Paula. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Cruz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lands.
Present.
Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Paula.
Here.
Councilmember Walters.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report out of closed session.
Yes, Mayor. The City Council, on a vote of three to one, with Mayor voting no, and Councilmember Bagby absent, has directed the City Attorney's Office to file a claim against the State Water Resources Control Board to continue to challenge the curtailment order and in order to protect the city's pre-1914 rights.
I'll record a no vote. I was cut off for that. I would like to record a no vote.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, because I was cut off.
Got it.
Technical difficulties. Any conflict of interest declaration by anybody on council? None. Agenda review, changes or resolutions. Okay. Also, we forgot to call our student liaison as part of the roll call, Guadalupe Nunez. She is present. At this point, I will go ahead and call for any public comments. Under these items, citizens may speak of matters within -- well, this is wrong -- which are not on the agenda. And also, the -- so members of the public may comment on any matter not on this agenda, and please limit the comments to three minutes. Any comments from the public, either in person or online? I see somebody standing up. Please go ahead and come forth. And I believe this is Mr. Bob Cox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff. As you know, I'm a member of the Clean River Alliance in this area. And for several years now, I've been cleaning the river as best I can to keep it as clean as possible. With a group of volunteers, this last Sunday, we cleaned up an encampment outside the Cloverdale Cemetery. We did not expect to have all that trash that we did come up with. So I want to thank City Manager David Kelly, and especially Hector Galvan and his crew for picking it all up on Monday. Had it stayed there any longer, those bags would have been kind of wet and really been a problem to take up. So I really appreciate the quick service. I apologize for the late notice. As I said, I didn't realize there was going to be so much, what is about 1,200 pounds of trash from buildup from the homeless encampment in the area. We will attempt to monitor that on a weekly basis so it doesn't get so terribly much. But if I make a request at this point, maybe you can take it up at a subcommittee meeting, but maybe we could have recology put a small dumpster there that we could control, keep it locked, and then we could put all the trash in there and it could be picked up on a regular basis. But again, thank you very much for the service and happy to oblige, happy to do it.
Mr. Cox, excuse me. Whereabouts are you thinking about?
Just outside the gates of the cemetery.
Thank you.
Probably towards the railway so that it's not so obvious, doesn't -- wouldn't take away from the looks of the cemetery.
Thank you.
Because we've done a lot of work there and wanted to keep it nice. So thank you.
Mr. Cox, I have one more clarifying question, if you don't mind.
You betcha.
Approximately, in your opinion, how many camps did you clean up to get 1,200 pounds of trash?
I think the trash was accumulating over probably many months. But there were, as I could count, probably three camps. And even one of the homeless people who was still there helped us clean it up. So I appreciate that help.
Thank you, sir, for your service.
You betcha. Happy to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any hands?
I see no hands, Mayor. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you very much. At this moment, we're going to go ahead with proclamation. Unfortunately, Craig Johnson is still on vacation, Vice Mayor.
Well, that doesn't do us any good, does it?
So we're going to continue to move this item to the next meeting. Well, we're just going to go ahead and postpone that to future agenda item. Student liaison report.
There was also a school assembly in which Keith spoke to everyone. His words of encouragement were heard by every student. Lastly, leaders of the school had a more intimate session in which their leadership skills were reinforced. The importance of being involved and leading their peers was also stressed to this group. It was an extremely positive experience which strengthened our school. As for our school clubs, they have also been very active. The FFA Club has been writing letters to our veterans as tomorrow is Veterans Day. While the Cloverdale Interact Club has just finished preparing essentials kits for the homeless. Thank you to our local hotels and dentists for their donations. We couldn't have done it without them. The club is also beginning a coke drive, so be sure to send your old cokes with your students. There will be boxes throughout the classrooms where these donations can be placed. Our seniors are also very busy. They are currently having conferences with our counselor, Ms. Olridge, in which they discuss their plans for the future and look back at their high school experience thus far. Just yesterday, the fall banquet was commemorating all the student athletes who participate in fall sports. I'd like to start off by congratulating the boys soccer team. They had an amazing season in which they remained undefeated. Last Friday, our school had the pleasure of hosting the boys soccer playoff game against San Antonio. Despite an unfortunate loss, the morale among the Eagles remained high as they ended their last game of the season. Congratulations, boys. As for our football team, this Friday, they will be playing against Marion Christian High School from Walnut Creek. This playoff game will be very exciting. It will begin at 7:00 p.m. on the high school football field. Please come and support the Eagles. And again, congratulations to all the sports who conclude their fall 2021 season. Lastly, the drama class has been working very hard to prepare their play, which will take place in early December. More details will approach -- or more details will be available once the date approaches. With that being said, to the mayor's court. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions to these members? Thank you for your report. Yes, good job. Now, we're going to have a presentation by resilient Cloverdale social cohesion survey findings. So if this is going to be under.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just by way of introduction, introduce our speakers tonight. Our speaker is Dr. Jennifer Shea. She's coming up from San Francisco State University. Dr. Shea was part of our resilient Cloverdale initiative. Dr. Shea, under a grant that was received from USGS, conducted a survey of residents in Cloverdale regarding resilience. And in part, the survey was to assess connections and bonds by stakeholder groups within our community because it's a reflection of how well our stakeholder groups in our community is able to respond to both emergencies and disasters. And this survey data is intended to help inform our decision-making around our resilience measures and also provides this important data about how we might work together as, you know, in terms of our city organization, but also our nonprofits to address critical issues and respond to emergencies. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Shea. Dr. Shea is going to walk you through a PowerPoint presentation that was included in the agenda packet and hopefully we'll get it up on the screen here shortly. Dr. Shea, I think at this time, if you want to, while we're getting the presentation up, introduce yourself and maybe provide a little bit of background for this work effort that you engaged in with stakeholders in the community of Cloverdale.
Great. Thank you so much, David. I really appreciate this opportunity to present to the Cloverdale City Council and all of your support in the work that we've been doing with the resilient Cloverdale group. So yeah, my name is Jennifer Shea. I am a faculty member at San Francisco State University. I've been here for 13 years now. And I'm a professor of public administration. And I come from a background in nonprofit management and civic engagement organizations, both internationally and domestically. And so this work here that I'll be presenting tonight is near and dear to my heart as somebody that is, you know, been deeply engaged, not only with community engagement projects generally, but specifically with community resilience work that's been going on in the city and county of San Francisco, which is how I got brought in here. And I will say, you know, as David noted, this research has been supported by US Geological Survey, is being supported by US Geological Survey. And we're working really closely in tandem with Daniel Aldrich, who's a professor, internationally renowned professor at Northeastern University. Once we get the presentation out, I actually added a slide with some hyperlinks that folks can link to, with Daniel Aldrich's bio, the program that we work with in San Francisco called the Neighborhood Empowerment Network, and our funders at USGS. This is part of the Haywire scenario. Some of you may be familiar with, which, you know, provides various scenarios for an earthquake along the Haywire Fault. And so very much USGS, you know, they tend to be a very scientifically focused organization. And they are very much focused on the science, but they're looking for more social science explanations. So, excuse me? Okay, we're still working on getting the presentation up, it looks like, right? Okay, great. Excellent. So this is, I was just kind of talking through some of these pieces here. All right, this is the earlier version of the presentation, but it's okay, there's just a couple of extra slides we can, I can just talk through. But, you know, we are also, the research is supporting myself and Daniel Aldrich's work, as I said, he's internationally renowned, around issues related to disaster resilience and the role of social networks and social cohesion in particular in helping communities, in helping communities bounce back from disasters. And so he's been advising us on the survey instruments that we're doing, and he's also been integral to the analysis that I'll present tonight. Also, I want to acknowledge a couple of SS State MBA candidates who have been working with us. Jessica Campos, who is bilingual, Spanish, English. So she did all the translation work, getting the instruments into Spanish and things like that. And Taryn Deepstein, who is not only working with us on the research, but also is deeply familiar with the work of the Neighborhood Empowerment Network. Again, the program in San Francisco that really brought us into Cloverdale in many ways. So lucky to have them as part of this project as well. Next slide, please. So the presentation will look a little bit like this. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about the survey background and goals and then give you a snapshot, right? So these are really the preliminary findings from this first survey that we did. We, so, you know, this research will involve at least four surveys, right? Two baseline surveys, one at the individual level. That's the data I'm presenting tonight. One at the organizational level. The organizational level data we've collected, we are just in the process of cleaning it and analyzing it and hope to be able to present that in the near future. And then later in 2022, we'll do follow-up surveys. And I'll come back to this at the end of my presentation. But the follow-up surveys will, the baseline surveys are, of course, baseline surveys meant to capture a snapshot of what we see in the community, but also to use as a baseline for planning on change, change strategies and goals. And so the follow-up surveys, when we conduct those, those will help us measure progress, right? Measure maybe persistent gaps, maybe gaps that have closed. But in any case, you know, to indicate, there'll be real indicators of what's going on on the ground. And both the baseline surveys and the follow-up surveys should be useful to the community should it want to pursue external funding to support this work. So, you know, this is more than just a research exercise. This is really, really meant to inform your community work on the ground. That's why I'm here tonight. And I've presented already twice to Cloverdale community groups. I'm happy to do more as things go on. Anyway, so I will provide a little bit more background information about the survey and our goals, give you a snapshot of what the network structure looks like in Cloverdale, and then talk about some indicators of community resilience and associated variables, the ones that matter most. And then present some key takeaways and preliminary recommendations. I've got an appendix, if you've had a chance to look through the deck here, an appendix that just gives you a little bit more on the variables that I won't have time to go into this evening, but you're free to look at. So, next slide, please. So the slide that's just missing in this version is the slide with the hyperlinks I promised. So hopefully, we can get that out to everybody after in the meeting if you haven't yet received it, if you want to learn a little bit more about Professor Aldrich, myself, the Haywire Initiative, or the San Francisco, the Neighborhood Empowerment Network. But right now, I will go into the survey background and goals. As I said, what I'm reporting now is preliminary findings from the first survey of individuals, right? So this is a little piece of the bigger project that we'll be doing. So first, I want to explain to you why we did the survey in the first place, right? And so the idea here is that we want to assess the relationship between individual characteristics, so things like gender and race, and outcomes like mental health and resilience, right? And so we get these indicators of resilience, these outcome measures, based on existing research. And largely, a lot of that research, again, Daniel Aldrich is a leader in the field on this. So these are robust, we know they're indicators. And the survey was measuring social cohesion in Cloverdale, both overall and during two recent crises. The public safety power shut-offs during the 2019 Cape fires and then the onset of the March 2019 COVID-19 shelter-in-place orders, right? So as two levers to see how people were feeling about community support and connectedness. And again, the goal of sharing these findings is to help inform community resilience goals and activities and create a baseline to measure the impact of interventions against those goals. So data collection for the surveys. I know at least some folks in the room have taken the survey, but if you didn't or if you're not familiar, we did data collection in spring of 2021. And respondents could take it online. We use Qualtrics survey software or on paper with the assistance of a community volunteer. And we administered these surveys, both in English and in Spanish. We got a really good response rate. 258 people responded to the survey, which is, according to what we call in statistics, the law of large numbers, enough to say that we've got something that's representative of the community so long as it largely mirrors the population. And the good news is our, the respondents do mirror the community. And 96% of the respondents actually live in Cloverdale. You know, we do have some overrepresentation in terms of the respondents, and these really aren't surprising given that, given the nature of the survey and what we know about civic involvement. Also, with statistical tools and things like weighting, we can sort of correct for these. They're not, they're not, it's not very skewed. So we have, among our respondents, we had proportionally high numbers of better-educated female and Hispanic respondents. So you can see here from the chart that's up there, 40% of the respondents identified as Hispanic or Latino, which is a pretty close match to the actual population of Cloverdale according to the 2020 census. And 49% identify as non-Hispanic white with a smattering of other identities in there. And then just as a, this is kind of a sign out here, but as I said, we administered the surveys in English and Spanish. And so 100% of the respondents who took the survey in Spanish identified as Hispanic or Latino, perhaps not surprisingly. But also, 5% of those who took it in English also identified as Hispanic and Latino. I tell you this because, you know, we're going to report some differences a little bit later in this presentation, actually, even in the next slide. And so sometimes we report them by race or ethnicity, but sometimes we report them by language. And, you know, we really think language matters more in this case. So the statistical analysis, for those who are interested, we used a variety of techniques. So the descriptive statistics were done in Qualtrics, the multivariate ones done in Stata. Professor Aldrich took the lead on those, as well as with the network analysis. But I just want to let you know, the purpose of this public facing presentation is to be accessible. So if you are a statistics person, I tell you now, I don't have P-values or confidence intervals reported in here. But any variables reported as mattering in this presentation are statistically significant at the 5% level or better. And the statistics and all of that reporting will be available in the full report when it's out to you in a few weeks. So this picture, oh, next slide, please, sorry. This picture here would -- this blue line represents a bit of a fracture, division, fragmentation in the community. And this is one of the network maps that Professor Aldrich generated based on survey responses to the prompt. So the prompt on the survey was, "I normally engage with following organizations or events." And asked people who were taking the survey to respond to that, and they could choose as many of 39 organizations that were listed on the survey as they wanted to. They could also add one or more organizations if they selected other. So what this network map shows is that we really have three clusters of residents that we're looking at with few connections between the clusters, right? So the bright pink ones, the sort of above the blue line, if you will, are white, non-Hispanic residents. The darker purple color to the left or below the blue line are Hispanic or Latino residents. And then the more peachy color are others. So because there's such a small number of folks that identify as other races or ethnicities that they're just grouped together. And then you can see, if you look at the bridging capacity indicator on the legend there, the size of the circle represents the bridging capacity. And so bridging capacity, I'll say a little bit more about this, but this is in social capital, a concept that means that bridging ties are the ones that connect us across groups who aren't like us, right? So this could be racial or ethnic identities. It could be religious identities. It could be education level, income level, a bunch of different things. But that there are some sort of difference. So here, what we're seeing is the race, ethnic bridges or lack thereof. And so what we are seeing here, again, is this division where there's, you know, the clusters of white, non-Hispanic residents sort of above to the right of the blue line and Latinos to the left and bottom of the blue line. And interestingly, while we have a lot of within-group ties, right? So a lot of ties connecting white people to white people, Hispanic or Latinos to Hispanic or Latinos, and actually, HU are among the other groups. There's not, there aren't very many bridging ties. So this is important to keep in mind, and we'll come back to this a little bit later in the presentation. But to just take a step back and look at, or kind of redefine this concept of ties, right? I said bonding ties are those that connect people with like characteristics. And those are important, right? The enclave that's important, I'm sorry, next slide. The enclave sometimes, and that's important, especially certainly in terms of folks when they're new to a community, it's important that they have people that share their cultures, their identities. But it's also known, especially, you know, in the work of resilience and civic engagement, that it's important also to have bridging ties. And bridging ties are horizontal ties, meaning that they connect us to people that are somehow on our same level, right? Maybe we belong to the same club. We go to the same school. We work at the same spot, even if not, if we're not in a similar position, right? So they might come from different backgrounds but share some sort of common interest. Maybe it's, you know, the local PT or something like that. And then linking ties are vertical. And we don't have real indicators of linking ties in this presentation here, but they are relevant because you are the city council. And linking ties are the vertical ties that connect local residents and their representatives, to representatives who have authority and share power, right? So clearly, members of the local and state governments. Also, perhaps, you know, influential nonprofit organizations or community-based organizations in that community. And what's really important to remember is these ties matter. They have really powerful influence. This has been documented over and over again by Professor Aldrich and others. They influence our daily lives and really can help us out of crises and disasters. So, you know, what we see then in Cloverdale is there seems to be, based on the data we have collected, which, like I said, you know, it's, the response rate is good enough to consider it representative, that we don't have one or two central actors in the organizational network. And we don't have, you know, many key influential people who are connected to many organizations. Consequently, most organizations aren't tightly connected to each other through residents. And, you know, so there aren't that many residents that have a high capacity to bridge or serve as conduits of information across groups in the network. And so this, you know, raises some concerns in disaster resilience research and disaster resilience practice. We like to see some redundancy, right? Networks that have few ties. You know, just think about it. If the ties break, then if something happens, if Mayor Cruz and David Kelly are connected -- if Mayor Cruz and David Kelly are connected, and they're the only connection between the two of them, which isn't the case, I'm sure. But if that tie breaks, and that was really the only tie connecting their two sides of the network, and one, something happens to one of them in a crisis, then, then the entire network breaks apart, right? And so you can imagine the consequences in disaster. Next slide, please. And actually, you can go straight ahead to the next one, because this is just the transition slide. I'm going to talk about three indicators of community resilience and some of the associated variables. So the three indicators that I'm going to highlight here are mental health status, feeling prepared or supported by the community during crisis, and community connections and activities. So this is kind of my spoiler alert, right? So we have what we would consider two robust variables. And those are the ones on the left-hand side that are always positive, which means they always go in the same direction as the outcome. So these are, are income and voice having an impact in the community. And these are all positively correlated with outcomes, including the frequency of volunteering, right? So if you have more income, you're more likely to volunteer more often. And if you're, if you believe that your voice has an impact in the community, you're more likely to volunteer more often. Same goes for interacting with more organizations on a regular base, a basis, and attending more community events. And then voice, feeling your voice has an impact also matters, maybe very salient for this group, for feeling supported by the local government, right? But income doesn't seem to matter for that one, according to our analysis. And then these other four variables that appear on the right-hand side of the screen matter for two or more of the outcomes that we looked at, but they don't always go in the same direction, right? So community comes together to solve problems might go in the same direction as increasing the frequency of volunteering or not. But what's important to take away are two things from this slide. One, are these always positive variables, right? That are really robust in thinking about, you know, what can be done to leverage those variables or, you know, move the needle. And then these other four, also to think about how they, how they can be, you might engage the community to leverage them to enhance community resilience. And, you know, the findings I present here importantly reinforce existing research in disaster resilience. So factors like wealth and community involvement, pre-event, matter for outcomes in the wake of the disaster. And then the bivariate analysis, so when we're looking at the correlation just between two variables, what we, what we see is that there are substantial differences in income and feeling one's voice has an impact by language, right? So this is the concern I raised earlier, that there seems to be some division here between the English-speaking community and the community that at least took the survey in Spanish, right? We did not ask them if they're monolingual in Spanish, but they clearly were comfortable taking the survey in Spanish. So what this suggests is that the Spanish-speaking population will likely bear a disproportionate income from disaster events, unless the community takes action to bridge linguistic divides, right? So that there might be a real disproportionate impact. And I think from some of the meetings I've been in, that probably is not a surprise to many. So variables that are correlated with mental health status. So mental health status is the outcome. And we measure this using an index called the Tessler Six, which is well-regarded in the field. Ask six indicator questions about how you felt about certain things in the past thirty days, thank you. And we look at the, you know, so the ones that matter, again, that are statistically significant, are up here on the screen. So the ones that are associated with better mental health outcomes that include owning your own home, you're feeling like you're able to turn to your friends if you lost your job, that voice having an impact in a community, and feeling supported by local government. So each of these things independently is associated with better mental health. And then, you know, this one that's associated with worse mental health is a little confusing, community comes together to solve problems. So we could hypothesize around that a little bit, but won't do that right this. Next slide, please. And so the next one I want to highlight, funding I want to highlight for you is variables that are associated with feeling supported by community-based organizations during the fall 2019 PSPS. So here on the left side, we have the variables associated with feeling less, less supported. So identifying as male, owning your own home, and feeling supported by friends. And, you know, that might seem a little odd at first, but we, we could hypothesize that, well, if you're owning your own home and you have a lot of friend support, maybe you just don't need to turn to CBOs. Maybe that you don't interact with the community-based organizations that much. You're, you know, look to your friends and have some sufficiency in your own home. And, you know, but we don't know that. That's worth further explanation or exploration. And then associated with feeling more supported by community-based organizations, again, particularly really salient for this audience, is feeling supported by the local government. So there seems to be maybe some, that there, there could be some interaction between support for local government and community-based organization.
Dr. Sheeh?
Yes.
Could we maybe go a little faster?
Excuse me, I didn't catch that.
Oh, it's that, it's already been twenty minutes.
Do you need me to speed up?
We need to summarize the slides.
Sure, sure. So let me skip then to the down here. There, you know, there are a number of these here. But let me skip over here to organizations that were identified the most here. So this, yeah, after the community connections. You can continue scrolling down. So right here, right? So we, you know, we did provide this list of organizations on the survey, again, thirty-nine organizations, and asked respondents to identify the ones that they interact with regularly. And the organizations that were identified the most are the ones here on the left-hand side, right? So the Cloverdale Regional Library, Senior Multipurpose Center, Citrus Fair, and La Familia Asana. You know, we have to take this with a grain of salt because the sampling method we used here was snowball sampling. And they, so we did have assistance in rolling out the survey from the library, the senior center, and La Familia Asana in particular, right? So, but, you know, there, these may be levers, organizational levers, that the community can work with if it chooses to advance resilient, resilience goals. And then, you know, you can see the others on the right-hand side of the screen. So next slide, please. So key takeaways here. The social network is fragmented, divisions paralleling linguistic ties. The strong bonding ties are limited, are, the strong bonding times are there, but there are limited bridging ties and seem to be few key influencers. Again, this bivariate analysis revealing differences along linguistic divides. And that these two variables matter for multiple outcomes, and they merit attention in community planning, especially related to disaster resilience. Next slide, please. So preliminary recommendations here. And then I have, I do have an additional slide that's not in this deck, but I do want to make sure that we talk through, and I'm not sure if Becky's here, but that we, we talked about that's more specific to Cloverdale. So, you know, the, the big punchline here is, you know, create a vision for what the network should look like and develop and implement strategies to advance that vision. More specifically, right, find ways to increase the bridging ties, especially to bridge that linguistic divide. And so you can see the bullet points there are some more specific suggestions around identifying specific individuals and organizations that can do that work. And then building the individual and organizational capacities to establish and maintain bridging and linking ties. And this is really important, right? You all, I'm sure I'm speaking to the choir here, but, you know, community, development, community planning work takes continued investment, and, you know, it's not a one-time thing. And then, yeah, as part of that, you know, continuing to encourage the broad-based planning. So the slide that, that you can't see in terms of what that means for Cloverdale, and again, you know, I worked with Becky Anis on this, is, you know, if we're thinking about organizations with bilingual and bi-cultural capacities, yeah, I'm sorry, you don't have this one, this was on the newer version. To look at organizations like Nuextra Comunidad, El Malagro, La Familia Asana, St. Peter's Church, and St. Vincent de Paul, and work with them. Look for possibilities for intergenerational programming with organizations like the School District, the Historical Society, Senior Center, the Veterans Building. Maybe consider leveraging capacities of Health Action Cloverdale to serve as actually the network organization, resourcing that, and sponsoring community events. And then, you know, research-wise, I'll just tie it up here. Again, you know, these are the baselines to inform community action and change strategies. And then the purpose of the follow-up surveys in 2022, which we hope will get widespread participation in again, is to measure change and progress and document successes or challenges in the community. But I will end it there. Sorry for taking too much time.
Well, it's a lot to condense in a few minutes. I open the floor to council members. Any questions or any comments? Okay, I'll open for public comment on this particular item. Are there any hands? Lori?
There's one hand.
Oh, I do have one person, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Becky?
Go ahead, Becky.
Hi, good evening, Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for listening to this presentation and taking into consideration all of these very interesting findings for the community of Cloverdale. I just wanted to connect some dots for folks and why I am involved in the project and have been involved in the project for more than a year now. Former Councilmember Turner invited me to participate in this project because, as some of you know, from the Finance and Admin Police Subcommittee meeting, I was reporting out regularly around still healing communities and using the model and a framework for these specific types of recommendations that this data is now bringing forward. And so I just want to circle back and say that the strategic, long-term planning for the community of Cloverdale really does need to focus, as you can see from the data tonight, focus on expanding leadership within the community and having some common goals that the community, that community residents can also be a part of that process of solving with leaders of organizations, with leaders like yourselves. So hope that the council will be invested in continuing, seeing the work forward in the structure that the Resilient Cloverdale Group has put in place. But also, consider Health Action as a format for an opportunity for other organizations to come to the table as we look forward, you know, to planning five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road for Cloverdale and who should be involved in those kinds of decision-making or conversations.
Thank you very much, Becky. Any other hands?
I see no more hands.
All right, so at this point, Lori, please make sure that speakers are off once they finish speaking. We're going to go ahead with the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed or considered separately.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item number D5, please.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on consent calendar exit on D5.
So, Madam Mayor, also, there is one correction on the minutes, which is item D1, in that I believe has been corrected. But I just want to make note, under F1, under the third and second motion, that Vice Mayor Lands was inadvertently not listed, and that would be, so I will second that with those addition corrections as amended.
You said it was corrected?
Pardon me?
You said that it was already corrected?
No, it's, it's not corrected in the packet.
Oh, it's not correct.
Yeah, so I wanted to add that under F1, the second and third motion inadvertently has Vice Mayor Lands left off that. And so that should be added back. And so with that, I will second that motion as amended.
I'll make a motion for D1 through four with the correction that Councilmember Paula stated.
Then I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Lori?
The first by Councilmember Lands and the second by Councilmember Paula.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Lands?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Baggy?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Passes five zero, thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted this item pulled, just from a transparency standpoint. The item is calling for a $36,000 expenditure for the purpose of office furniture and equipment for our police department. And I just think it's well justified, Chief. But I think from a community standpoint, when people see furniture for $36,000, that's a lot of money. But if you could just explain to us a little bit what we're purchasing. I know I've been through the facility many a times, and it's justified. But like I said, from a transparency standpoint, I would just like some verbal dialogue with it.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
And I'll be happy to bring that forward for you. Just kind of explain, I'll go back a little bit, that originally brought the police department upgrade to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee back in December 1st of 2020. The reason we brought this forward is because we were aware that the new design of the police facility was most likely not going to happen. So we entertained the idea of upgrading the current police facility that had a four-phased approach to it. One of those phases was the upgrade to the upstairs patrol room. Currently, the furniture that's in the facility now is well beyond 15 years old. The individuals that have been here longest, I've talked to them, inquired about the furniture that exists. It's been there since they've been there. It might even go well beyond 15 years. Some of it is outdated, some of it is not comfortable, it's not effective for us anymore. Some of the partitions are broken, and we're having to stand them up with other things to keep them upright. So what this was proposed was a portion of that phase that does not jeopardize the integrity of the facility. So what we'd be asking for, and what's here tonight on the staff report, is simply for some new desktops and some new partitions that actually have roll-up cabinetry on them that provides the officers with their own locker, if you will, or cabinet, that they can store their reports, their binders, their paperwork, their personal effects. Currently, right now, we don't have anything that provides that for those officers. And as you know, a lot of other things that are taking place because of COVID, we were having to do court preliminary hearings from our office. They were having to use their own workstation to be on Zoom to be able to handle that. So a lot of changes have happened for us. And we really wanted to try to reorganize that facility for the officers that had been there. It's very It's very cluttered, and we were hoping that this would be something that would reorganize and make it much more usable. We're growing, of course, and the facility is remaining the same. So this was something that we really hoped to try to do, and it was in the original proposed plan. If you recall, that we submitted an executive summary, this furniture was part of that. And so it's really an ask that we think we would like to see happen now, because as we know, we can't move forward on any of the structural designs because the police department has some issues with structural integrity, and it needs to be retrofitted for earthquake-proof. And so before we can do any of that type of upgrades, this is something that doesn't affect that. And so its desks, its partitions with secured roll-top cabinetry, its new chairs, chairs have been there for 15 years, and so that's really what we're asking tonight. And I hope that answers your question. I'll be happy to.
If so, Chief, and thank you. And just to point out before the mayor opens it for questions, it is a budgeted item. So it was budgeted already, but like I said, just from a transparency, I thought we'd have a little discussion about it, so. But thank you for that presentation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, open to the public. Any comments on this? Any hands? Yeah, let's go ahead and vote on this item.
I'll make the motion. You can second, then she can do the question.
What?
Since it was open for discussion?
And then we vote.
First is public comment, given that it was open for discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Angela Cordova. I have been to the police department, and I have to agree that it's pretty dilapidated. It's very well-deserved, especially since they got sold out on their new building.
Thank you. Okay, now I go ahead. Any hands before I close? Lori, any hands?
I have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer this by title only, please. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving an agreement with Arnold's Office Furniture in the amount not to exceed $36,700, I'm sorry, $36,799.09 with a 10% contingency for potential cost overruns to provide all necessary furniture and equipment for the Cloverdale Police Department patrol room upgrades and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Roll call.
First by Walter, second by Paula.
Correct.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Lands?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to move on to communications. Is there any comment on this? David?
Madam Mayor. Members of council, there is one communication in your packet from Mrs. Kristin Sullivan. This is in regards to climate change and the request for council to take actions to address the planning for climate change.
Thank you. And we'll move to public hearings. David?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. The item tonight is a public hearing to consider the local hazard mitigation plan as well as a general plan safety element, an updated element of your general plan, and by the way, it is a required element of your general plan. This has been a multi-year effort to develop a local hazard mitigation plan. It is a mandated requirement that we have a local hazard mitigation plan, and it serves multiple purposes, which we'll touch on later this evening or in the presentation. But just real quickly, wanted to indicate that this is an important document, not only because it identifies significant environmental and physical hazards within our community, it also sets us up to be able to apply for grant funding and/or long-term loans from the local, from the California Office of Emergency Services. Council may recall that they approved a project for improving our downtown drainage system, which we submitted a grant application for, and one of the reasons why we didn't rank well was because we didn't have an updated local hazard mitigation plan. So besides being mandated, it's an important document to identify hazards and supports our ability to apply for funding for mitigating some of the critical hazards that impact our community. Likewise, we did a dual effort to update our general plan safety element so that it comports with our local hazard mitigation plan. Quite a bit of work went into this. It's now been presented by our, and reviewed by our planning commission, as well as various community outreach workshops and presentations. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director. He's going to give you a brief overview. And then our consultant, who has done quite a bit of work in this effort, Mr. Bob Lagermarzino, is going to do a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Chair, council members, I mean. I'll just turn it over to Bob. That was kind of what I was going to give you an update on. It did have two workshops. Planning Commission did adopt a resolution recommending approval by the city council, and there was a community survey done. But I'll let Bob get into the details, and Lori, I don't know if you have Bob's presentation that we could get up?
You're on mute, Lori.
Can you move him over?
I think I see.
I have the cherry-squeak one.
Bob?
Lori, can we move Bob Lagermarzino over as a panelist, and he can share a screen?
It's item F1.
Bob, you've been moved over to a panelist. If you can share a screen? And Bob, you're on.
Does Bob have a presentation?
Yeah, here he goes.
Very good. Thank you.
You're on, Bob. You can turn mute off.
Okay. You can hear me now, presumably.
Yes, and how long we have?
He has 10 minutes.
10 minutes, and we're keeping time. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's good to be back, Mayor and council members, with the exception of Mr. Paula. Last time I met with you, you were not a member, so it's good to see you. David did a great job of framing up what I'm going to be talking about, but I'm still going to go with a lighter touch so that we can get in the 10 minutes. I'll give you a quick overview of the mitigation plan and the process and what we're expecting to do tonight with that. Same with the public's health and safety element, or safety element. Then I'll talk about some of the procedural requirements that we have already addressed. And following that, we'll set the council up to take action. So this first slide here, I always like to include in my presentations because it frames up kind of the totality of emergency management, and it relates to the before, during, and after aspects of specific events. Mitigation planning is and happens before and after emergencies. I'm going to talk a little bit more about how mitigation is defined, but I wanted to mention preparedness, response, and recovery, because I know the city's spending quite a bit of energy in addressing those aspects of emergency management as well. For example, on the preparedness side, the Resilient Cloverdale effort is a fantastic example of getting people together so that they can be better prepared for the eventual problems that you'll have to deal with. And I'll add anecdotally, the folks who have been participating in reviewing the material that you're going to act on tonight have all expressed real appreciation and been impressed by what we described with respect to Resilient Cloverdale. And I think that's borne out with the presentation earlier, which, by the way, I think the reference that Dr. Shea made was to bouncing back from disasters or hazardous events, and that falls in the category of recovery. So we're covering a lot tonight. First, real quickly, as David mentioned, this is a required document. In 2000, the federal government enacted the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 with the intent of getting local governments to really focus seriously on planning for disasters before they occur and averting some of the problems that have long plagued particularly FEMA in how it helps communities recover. So the intent is to plan before to minimize the effects of hazards. It's a requirement for all governments, tribal, state, local, and as David mentioned, importantly, it's a fundamental requirement for establishing and maintaining eligibility for quite a few funding programs, including some, as David mentioned, that the city has participated in the past. One important thing to mention is the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires that plans be prepared and updated on a five-year cycle. I'll talk a little bit more about where the city stands with respect to that. And importantly also, the plans are reviewed by the California Office of Emergency Services and FEMA, and I'll talk more about that with respect to the procedural aspects of things. Generally, in preparing this plan, we followed a framework that FEMA has established for moving through mitigation plans. It's a four-step process, organize, assess the risks, develop the strategy, and adopt and implement the plan. We prepared a scope of work for my team, and by the way, I have to mention that in addition to my firm, Lagermarzino Planning and Management, Dynamic Planning and Science, was a key member of the team, particularly with respect to crunching a lot of numbers and producing maps. And also Pete Parkinson, who is there in Sonoma County, helped a lot with looking at some of the mitigation actions and the policy side of things on the general plan safety element. So our tasks mirrored what FEMA has set up as its ideal process. So the first thing that we did really is picking up where other planning processes have left off. We needed to identify the hazards that were most important for consideration in Cloverdale. Previous planning efforts, including an A-BAG regional, sort of super-regional mitigation planning process that the city had participated in a few cycles ago, the Sonoma County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which by the way is being updated right now, and the general plan safety element, all identified earthquakes and their associated effects, a wildfire, and particularly the wildland urban interface, flooding, and landslides. So when we started this process, we took cues from a few different places, including procedural or legal requirements that I'll cover in a little bit, and we brought into the fold for the mitigation plan, climate change, drought, localized flooding and drainage, and David mentioned that the city had gone after some funding to help with some problems that are pretty well-defined, but we added that into the mix. And in the course of our getting into this planning process, COVID-19 hit, and for obvious reasons, there was an interest in including pandemic or epidemic conditions. So Kevin mentioned that we did do a community survey, and we asked the respondents what their biggest concerns were. You can see in this slide, we did break things down geographically within the city, northwest, northeast, southwest, southeast, and the, pretty consistently, the biggest concern was wildfire, and understandably, at the point that we did the survey, the health pandemic was number two. Drought is up there and has become even more pronounced as a problem over the course of the preparation of the plan, then climate change, and we move on down the line. So we took those cues as well as we went through a prioritization process that included evaluation of probability, the potential impact, the spatial extent of a hazard's effects, the warning time before things had happened to be done in order to protect people and property, and then the duration, how long would the effect of a hazard last? So we ended up determining based on that prioritizations that we should focus on drought, earthquake, flooding, both FEMA-type flooding, which is the 100-year flood plain, largely in Cloverdale associated with the Russian River and with the creeks that flow into the city, but we also looked at the downtown flooding problem, which, again, is associated with the creeks flowing into town. We looked at geological hazards, two types, slope failure, which is really landslide or mud flow, and soil instability, liquefaction and subsidence, neither of which is a big problem in Cloverdale. And then we profiled epidemic, pandemic, and vector-borne disease, which is associated through the state hazard mitigation efforts with the other two general disease categories. And then finally, and very importantly, we looked at wildfire. So for each one of those hazards, we prepared a profile, and we included lots of information about the history of Cloverdale's interaction with those different types of hazards. We talked about some of the things that I just mentioned with respect to prioritization, location, where is the city affected, what has been the frequency, what might be the likely frequency in the future, severity and extent, warning time, again, things that went into our initial assessment, we just described those in a little bit more detail. We also talked about kind of the linkages among hazards. So what are the secondary hazards that have a relationship to the hazard being discussed in the profile? And then the, for purposes of addressing content requirements, the legal content requirements, the vulnerability assessment is a big deal. Again, my teammates at Dynamic Planning and Science went through a pretty rigorous GIS-based evaluation using some tools that FEMA has stood up for this very purpose. We looked at development trends, you know, how do the city's plans for development interact with the potential, for potentially increasing risk? City's actually in good stead with respect for pointing development in the direction, away from hazardous conditions. We looked importantly at the relationship between climate change and each of those hazards. This addresses some important requirements that have been established through state law for local planning and specifically for the general plan safety element or public health and safety element in Cloverdale. And then for all of the hazards we profiled, we came up with succinct hazard problem statements. You know, so what? What are the, what are the potential consequences of those hazards in town? So the vulnerability assessment, again, I mentioned GIS-heavy, lots of data, but the focus was really looking at which, what kind of people in town, where in town would people be affected, and we quantified that based on census information. We looked at property damage based on valuation information that we were able to get through the county assessor. And importantly, we looked at critical facilities, you know, what are the essential or critical facilities in Cloverdale that might be at risk from the hazards that we were profiling? And then finally, for each, we did a damage assessment.
This is very interesting. We need to speed it up, please.
Okay. You said speed up, I said, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll speed up. Okay, so the essence of the mitigation plan is putting together actions. So we put together a list of actions, literally, that looks like this, that works through a lot of information or several different types of information on each action that we included in the plan, and these actions, importantly, getting back to David's comments, set the stage for pursuing funding support from the federal government or the state government for mitigating. funding support from the federal government or the state government for mitigating against disasters. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but we had a total of 16 mitigation actions in the mitigation plan. I will say here, and this is a real contemporary reference, David just got the notice of funding opportunity or notice of funding availability from California OES. And one of the things that he mentioned as possibility for seeking assistance with is backup generators, specifically at the corp yards. So here are the balance of those. So it's very action-oriented. So at the same time that we produced the mitigation plan, and again, this is linked in state law, we decided to update the city's safety element, or in the lexicon of Cloverdale, the public health and safety element. That's one of the seven, seven and a half mandated elements of a general plan in California for all local governments. And the requirements are, they're a little bit different from the federal requirements first in that they are state requirements. They don't have a five-year timeframe, the safety elements don't, with some limited exceptions with linkages between the safety element and other elements of the general plan. There's very limited state oversight, there's an advisory role that I'll describe. So that's it for what you need to do in a general plan safety element, cover geologic hazard, flooding hazard, wildland, urban fires, and then climate adaptation resilience is a new requirement. A few pieces of legislation have drawn linkages between the safety element and the mitigation plan, AB 2140, which we've covered actually in the adoption resolution tonight. AB 1241 speaks to the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, overview of safety elements. I'll describe that a little bit more. Climate adaptation and resilience came into the mix through SB 379 in 2015. It's triggered by the update of the revision of the mitigation plan. SB 1035 in 2018 sort of broadened or more elaborate the requirements for adaptation and resiliency. And then two pieces of legislation in 2019 address evacuation routes, and we've covered that in what we've done. So the public health and safety element consists of two documents. One is the background report, specifically Chapter 10 of the general plan background report, which we've updated with the information from the, that we prepared for the mitigation plan, relabeled it public health and safety from hazards. The policy document, which is the prescriptive part of the plan, is Chapter 8 of the general plan. That's where all the goals, policies, and implementation programs are. We've updated that based on a number of sources and our understanding of requirements that are in place and that have been communicated by the state of California. We, again, to address the statutory mandates, brought in climate adaptation resilience as well as the disease epidemic and pandemic. And the implementation programs pretty much mirror the mitigation actions from the mitigation plan with the exception of a few that we added regarding inventory of hazardous materials, fire safe regulations, and getting in sync with the state, the current state requirements for that, as well as the evacuation zones and routes, again, getting back to the two pieces of legislation that passed in 2019. So the procedural requirements for the mitigation plan, we've been through it all. I mentioned Cal OES review. We worked closely with them to produce a plan review tool. We consulted with staff, got that done, prepared a handful of revisions to the plan. The versions that you have in your agenda packet reflects those revisions. Per the process, OES forwarded that version of the plan to FEMA Region 9 in Oakland. They took a look at the plan, actually took a very quick look, and issued in August, on August 24th, a memo indicating that the plan would be approved pending adoption by your council, which we're hoping to do tonight. Once you do that, if you do that, we will pass the resolution on to FEMA, and they will issue the final approval letter, which will establish your eligibility for the funding programs, for a variety of funding programs, as David mentioned. For the safety element, I have to cover CEQA. First, we prepared.
And could you just read the titles only, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you read the titles only?
Okay, I'm having a little trouble hearing you, but this is my last slide.
We need you to read the titles only and wrap up the presentation, please.
If I heard you correctly, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so for the safety element, we did, because this is a potential project per CEQA, we decided to go ahead and prepare an initial study. We determined that because your action will not result in any physical change in the environment, a negative declaration is a suitable CEQA document, not a mitigated negative declaration because no mitigation is required. We prepared that, distributed it through the state clearinghouse, received no comments. So we're good to go there. We initiated tribal consultation per requirements of AB 52 and SB 18, which relate to projects or general plan amendments. We got a consultation list from the Native American Heritage Commission, distributed notifications, and there were no requests for consultation. The final, and this was actually ended up being a fairly heavy lift, was consultation with CAL FIRE to address the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection Review, per the state law that I mentioned. We went through CAL FIRE, helped them with a safety element assessment matrix, made a few modifications to the background report and to the policy document to address some of their concerns, most of which have to do with high or very high hazard, fire hazard severity zones, of which there are very few or there's very little land covered by those designations in the city. So the way we framed things up was that the city would continue to pursue collaboration with Sonoma County to ensure that the areas, both within, but probably more importantly, surrounding Cloverdale would address some of the statutory requirements for fire safety. We went to the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection Review, I mean, Fire Protection, last week after somewhat of a delay based on fire season. They had reviewed the plan, they had.
We need to close the presentation. Could you give the summary, please? We have another presentation in schedule.
Boy, I'm sorry, I'm having real problems.
We need you to wrap up because we have another presentation.
Okay, all right. That's, so that's it. Council adoption, the, I wanted to make one thing clear, is that the council action covers both the policy document and the background report, as well as the initial study and negative declaration. And with that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
Open to council for questions? I understand this is very important document because it opens the door for us to be able to get funding for infrastructure improvements and so on. So any other questions from council? Thank you very much. Now we're going to go ahead and follow for the recommended action. Should we open to the public prior to? Okay, so open to the public on mitigation plan as required for Cloverdale. Any hands? Laurie, any hands?
I see none, mayor, thank you.
Anybody in the public wants to comment or ask questions about the mitigation plan? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for resolution.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to open Resolution Number 1, Exhibit A, by title only, please. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale adopting an initial study, negative declaration, and local hazardous mitigation plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, it was Councilmember Walter, seconded by Councilmember Bagby.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Justice 50, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to.
I'd like to offer the resolution, the second resolution, by title only, resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale updating the general plan, public health and safety element, and adopting an initial study, negative declaration.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
That was Councilmember Bagby, seconded by Councilmember Paula.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Justice 50, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move on to new business, and that would be an update on Cherry Creek Affordable Housing. David, did you want to say something about this prior to the presentation?
Please, mayor, thank you. One second, let me pull up the agenda report, right there. Good evening, mayor, members of council, members of the audience. Tonight, the item before you under new business is an update on the Cherry Creek Affordable Housing Project. Really, at this point, it's an update on the construction. The project is well underway, but a little bit of background for council. Tonight's efforts are culmination of about, I would say, nearly 10 years of work that the council and staff have entertained in terms of preparing the Cherry Creek Village site for development. It's really exciting to see the progress that's been made on construction of the project. In 2019, the council made a decision to approve a negotiating, exclusive negotiating agreement with Kingdom Development for development of an affordable housing project on a site that was owned by the Housing Successor Agency. Again, we, it was a project that we had talked about for some time. Subsequent to the council's approval of the negotiating agreement with Kingdom Development, the project design was reviewed and approved by Planning Commission. The project that was approved by Planning Commission included 24 units, of which three were designated for extremely low-income residents, 12 were designated for households earning no more than 40% of AMI, so still very low, and eight for households earning no more than 50% of the area median income. So really, this is targeting, you know, some of the most needed, or population in our community that has most need for housing. One unit was designated for management purposes. Subsequent to approval of the design, council did approve various agreements to support the affordable housing project. It does include a regulatory agreement that restricts the affordability for a 55-year period, and we do have a 99-year land lease for that property. In order to make the project feasible, council did consider and discuss providing financial assistance to the project, which we did in the form of both a pre-development loan as well as use of our Housing Successor Agency funds. And that project, those funds were reviewed as part of a pro forma by an independent consultant, and the costs were validated, and our contribution was validated in terms of support for the project. One thing to note is, you know, often these types of projects are designed with a lot more units, and so the price per unit tends to, in terms of affordability, or in terms of a city's contribution, tends to go down when you have more units. But given the relative number of units on the project site, the cost per unit is, you know, somewhat on the high side. But with that said, I think the goal is to deliver really what are considered some really high-quality residential units for those, again, most in need in our community. In terms of the affordability agreement, you know, this very much is a, in a lot of regards, a traditional affordable housing project. There was a discussion early on about whether council was interested in considering a navigation center or considering other uses. But I think after a lot of discussion with the Walls House and identifying the long-term partnership that we've had with them, council really settled that what we're doing is developing an affordable housing project. So I just want to cover that. This isn't, this isn't an emergency shelter necessarily. It's not a homeless shelter. It really is an affordable housing project, but it's targeting the most needed residents in our community. And I know there's a real commitment by the Walls House to address needs of our community members that have, you know, housing needs within our community today, including addressing the residents that were there prior to the demolition of the former project. So Kevin has a few slides, there's some great pictures that show the progress of the work that we're doing. And one thing I think council can feel proud of is that the investment that you made really is going to improve the infrastructure on the site. Those include the frontage improvements, the sidewalk, the drainage, the water and the wastewater infrastructure that ultimately will serve the project. And then based on the architecture of the work of the project, I mean, I think it's going to be something that you're going to be really proud of to see when it's ultimately finished. But Kevin, I'll turn it over to you. You have a couple of pictures just to show kind of the progress that's been made on the construction of the project.
Yeah, these were provided by Colleen, and I don't know, Colleen, if you want to come up and let us know what's going on in the pictures. I have spoke to the building inspector, and he's very happy with the contractor, saying it's a really top-rate contractor, and they haven't been trying to cut any corners. And we've been, you know, monitoring their stormwater and all that kind of stuff, and they've been a really good contractor. So, Colleen, I don't know if you want to let us know what are in your pictures?
Well, obviously, this here is, when they're putting up the hardy, this is fire-resistant siding that we're using. There's a lot of emphasis and focus on safety on this project, and that's one of the concerns that we had was to make sure that we bought high-end siding for the property. I think this was one of the days when they first started putting in the windows. They've obviously made a lot of progress since these pictures were taken, but I was able to go inside the units and step up onto the top, the top level, and look out and see the views. It's just incredible. It's just, it's just amazing. We were able to put the windows in the old house that we're restoring. And I guess the main thing that's left right now is the common building to be framed up. We're getting the roofs on, and we have what they, I think they call a top-up celebration in December. That's when they're expecting to have the roofs on.
There's more slides, we can, I put all your pictures in. Maybe, Laurie, we can go to the next slide?
So this was taken by one of the drones. We had a drone that we flew over the property, and this was, again, before the framing was Again, another picture from the drone, and you can see that, you can still see the hills in the background. And then, again, from the drone. This was one of the first days that we actually were able to get some of the weatherproofing on the outside before they put the siding.
I think that was the last picture.
Yeah, we have weekly meetings where they give an update on all of the challenges, if there are any. For example, when we had some of the flooding and the rain days. But it's been real smooth. We've had, it's been a smooth project, and we're, in fact, ahead of schedule. So we're happy to report. Originally, we had a completion date of August of 2022, and we're looking at completing in the spring, which is quite an accomplishment given the COVID supply chain issues. We had a $200,000 increase in the lumber costs, but everything else has been going along really well. We've got an amazing, amazing construction crew there. The guys from GMH, it's a fairly young company, they are so professional, and we just can't say enough about that company. and we just can't say enough about that company.
Maybe, Colleen, if you can, for council, it's covered in the agenda report. But talk just briefly again about the unit mix. I know we talked a lot about that early on.
Right.
You know, I was a big fan of some of the one-bedroom units. But I know you spoke to kind of the need for some of the three-bedroom units. And maybe you can kind of talk to council, share with council, you know, ultimately what the product's going to be, but why the unit mix?
Right. So before, if you recall, we had, it was a motel, and we had nine studios and a three-bedroom house, which the three-bedroom house used to be where the people that owned the motel lived, and there was a studio attached. We couldn't accommodate families, and that was a big challenge for us. We do get quite a few single parents who are, you know, with their children, and we just didn't have any place to put them, so then we had restrictions in that way. So when we planned this development, we wanted to make sure that we had a bigger mix for families, and that's, in fact, what we've done. We've got 80% of the units are larger. There, we have eight three-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units, and nine one-bedroom units. So that, and we can even put some, you know, single parents in some of the one-bedrooms, but generally, we, you know, we're expecting that we're going to get some bigger families. That's also important because this property, the development, has project-based vouchers. So anyone that's coming into Cherry Creek Village who is low-income will have the benefit of having to pay no more than 30% of their income for rent, which is quite good for the families that are, you know, possibly struggling in other areas. So that's the unit mix. So 80% of the bedrooms are for larger families. Yeah.
And likewise, Ms. Hallam, you know, there was also a lot of discussion when we were working on the agreements for the project around the services that would be provided. And maybe, you know, included in the packet is a copy of the service plan, so council has that, and the community can access it. But maybe you can just talk a little bit about the services budget. I think when we were discussing, your budget was about $250,000 annually for services.
It is still in that range. Some of that will be dependent upon one of the grants we've just recently applied for with the help of Assistant City Manager Kevin Thompson. We're waiting to hear about the results of that. But it's definitely going to be sufficient to support myself and our new supportive housing case manager, Jessica Chavez, who's here tonight. And we will also have an office for a property manager, and we have a total of five offices and a conference room. And that will accommodate myself, Jessica, the property manager, and we'll have two flexible offices that will be utilized by specialized case managers. So for example, we have a relationship with the Post Institute. They work with families who have children who have been in the system and deal with the associated trauma that they may have, the adverse childhood experiences, the ACEs. Or we also are talking with Sonoma State to get some interns in for people who are getting their MSWs, their Masters in Social Work, and also from Santa Rosa J.C. and Mendocino College. Those two offices will allow us to do that. But the budget, depending on if it swings up to 240, 250, will give us that extra $40,000, $50,000 a year to be able to develop the relationships with the specialists that we might need. So for instance, we're going to, we know we're going to probably have, we already do have some clients who've experienced domestic violence, so people that have the DV experience are going to be very helpful. And, yeah, we're pretty excited about the fact that we can, now, we can't require that people accept services, but we are going to make sure that everybody knows that they're available, and, yeah, we're very excited about that.
Colleen, that was my next question. Could you remind us of what kind of services will be provided to the individuals that will be residing there?
Right. So in the attachment, just to remind myself what we said, for example, housing retention counseling, we want to make sure that once they get into housing, that they're able to stay stabilized in housing. You know, if we see that someone's becoming destabilized for whatever reason, we would, you know, work with them to try and work with the property manager and make sure that they stay housed. We also work with Child Protective Services to make sure that their social workers are plugged in with the family, and because many times our clients have active Child Protective Services cases, so we would work with them, along with, if someone is on probation, which usually, by the time they get to that place in their housing placement, they would have possibly gotten off probation in order to pass the background check. But we would also work with them. We help with custody issues. We'll connect them with legal assistance, legal referrals, peer support assistance, that's a big part of what we do. Make sure that they're connected to people in the community that have lived experience and have succeeded in overcoming some of their barriers to a full life. Independent living skills, substance use disorder recovery and treatment facilitation, that's one area that we are, we have a lot of experience in that area, and we've got a lot of connections in the recovery field. So that's something, again, we can't require that they do it, but we have, will facilitate onsite recovery meetings and bring in people who may help them along their journey. Mental health connection to trauma-informed clinical support and resources. So this is going to be a big emphasis for us. We won't have the ability to have anyone who is clinically trained on staff, but again, we would be able to connect with the people that specialize in those areas, and as well as any medical needs they might have. And then, you know, just general fun stuff like potlucks and, you know, communal get-togethers. We're going to have an exercise room. We're going to bring in some classes for that. We have Andy's Lending Library. We had a client pass away, and he left us with quite a few videos. So we're going to make a, you know, make it a tradition to use those videos to do things fun with the kids. Yeah, so those are, that's a general overview of the services.
Thank you, and I'll open to council to ask or make any comments.
Madam Mayor, please.
Yes, please.
First of all, Madam Mayor, I'd like to thank you and staff for getting this item on the agenda. And, Colleen, thank you for coming this evening. One of the reasons I wanted to talk about the project is just to kind of clear up some of the rumors in the community. There seems to be some opinions in the community that the footprint and the programs have changed. And I thought, not only is this a $1.9 million project for the city, and we should get an update, and you have started going vertical, so it's really starting to take shape now. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this project has not changed since the City Council approved it a year and a half ago, however long ago it was. It's not going to become a shelter. It's not going to become a house for drug addicts or people with mental illness. So I just want to get that right out there.
Right.
And thank you for giving us the update. If you wanted to elaborate, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's important, because I think some of the confusion stems from the fact that Wallace House was an overnight shelter for many years. And about five or six years ago, when things changed in the homeless population that we were helping, we really realized that we weren't being effective. And so we changed our model. The board decided that we would focus more on people who were willing to accept the help that we had to offer. And we found that that was typically people who were coming out of treatment, who would otherwise be homeless. So let's say, for example, a typical client for us would be, in fact, the last two women who came there with children. They had graduated from treatment. They would otherwise have been homeless. They had gotten their kids, the custody of their children back. They would have lost custody of their children. The reunification process would have been completely fractured. And the hopelessness that comes along with that, when you're, if you're, say, okay, I'm going to give up drugs or alcohol, and I'm going to go into treatment, and I'm going to come out, and I'm going to live in my car and lose my kids. I mean, that's what we decided we needed to be focused on, and that's what we do. And I know that isn't popular with everyone. They would love to see everybody that's down on the river at the Wallace House, not everyone, but some. We just didn't find that that was really our sweet spot when it came to helping people. And so we're going to continue to do what we do, and people don't have to be homeless to come to Cherry Creek Village. They can be homeless, or they can be imminently at risk of being homeless. So for example, they are, they'll, in the process, may be losing their housing for whatever reason. Or they could be precariously housed. You know, that's another area where there are a lot of people who are couch-surfing in Cloverdale. Mayor Cruz referred us to a lady, a blind woman, who's living in a garage that doesn't have heat. You know, we help, we will help her, and Jessica's gotten, built a connection with her. We'll walk alongside of her until we can find her a place to live. We continue to do that. We have a senior gentleman at the Wallace House who's been with us for a while, who was first-time homeless. He, his landlord evicted him. He didn't know that he shouldn't be evicted, and he ended up at the, in the bushes at the senior center, and they said, you better go down to the Wallace House. And he's been with us. He's, you know, got some mild dementia. But he wouldn't have qualified, if we were just chronically homeless, under the HUD definition, we wouldn't have been able to help him, which is one of the other reasons why we changed our programs, because we wanted to be able to help first-time homeless people before they became chronically homeless. So that's what we're going to continue to do, and it's, you know, it's just what we do.
Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. No, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks so much for letting us do this, and we're really excited. Like I said, we're going to have a grand opening, and you're, of course, would all be invited. And so thank you so much, really. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bagby, did you have a question?
No.
Thank you, Colleen. I appreciate this great presentation and the product. Looks like it's going to be great when I look forward to it. I just have a few questions clarifying. You're in a lot of meetings with me, and we've met a lot regarding the homeless population or some of our underserved. A few months ago, I brought forth a test case in our homeless meeting, and I kind of passed this person around within the group. He's a single father. He has a daughter or had a daughter. He's had to give her up now because he's couch-surfing. But he, in the past few months, has not been able to get anything from any of our service providers in this county. What is your application process, and how can you help someone like this that is going to be different?
Right. So we have, as I mentioned earlier, we are going to have a property management company who's been trained. The Tax Credit Allocation Committee, which is where we got most of our funding, they require that you have an onsite property management company that has managed at least 10 other properties similar to what you have. So in this case, they would be able to navigate all the different layers of the funding and all the requirements for that funding. So for example, you might have one layer that is fair housing, and then you have another layer, which is for the HUD project-based vouchers, and then you have another layer that's our regulatory agreement. And you might have another layer and another layer. Depending on what, affordable housing, so he would most likely qualify under the affordable housing requirements, he would have to pass a criminal background check, because in, especially in this particular case, we won't be allowing anyone that has any violent felonies, because we, again, we have a lot of children and domestic violence victims, people who've experienced past trauma. But if he can pass, if he can get past those hurdles, you know, he should apply. And that would all be done, again, through the property management company, because there's a lot of paperwork involved.
Does Cloverdale have any preference with your applications to help homeless specifically?
Well, one of those layers that I mentioned is the regulatory agreement, and it does specify that we are going to look to prioritize Cloverdale. Now, I don't know how the property management company is going to balance that whole thing with fair housing. That's why I say I'm glad I'm not making these decisions, because it is a very challenging process for the property management company, but they've done it, and that's why they want, that's why Tax Credit Allocation Committee wants somebody that's done it before, so that, you know, there are a lot of things to consider, especially when you're dealing with HUD.
I'd be curious to see if they have a percentage they work off of, or if any information you can get us to let us know if they're looking for a certain amount from Cloverdale, you know, as the preferential.
Right.
I would be curious if you could maybe, you know, look into that a little bit more over time and let us know, or let me know.
Right, right. And then, of course, the other layer is that we have, we've got to consider that we're going to be accepting coordinated entry referrals. So that's another thing that we, and that'll be, that would be countywide. You can do a geographic preference with coordinated entry, but there's some, you know, it's a little bit challenging.
Let's see here. I'm just reading through my questions. I apologize. What do you do when somebody vacates? Are these places furnished, unfurnished? Do you do a check-in, checkout process? Do you, as people move on, or move up, I should say? You know, because we're hoping they succeed and get better in life. What type of, you know, check-in, checkout policies do you have for damaged furniture that might be furnished and then destroyed, things like that?
Well, so in terms of furnishings, we do supply furnishings to people who need them. We have a pretty sizable budget for that. In fact, we're just in the process right now of ordering, for example, the mattresses, because we like to make sure everybody's got brand-new mattresses. So even if they don't, they might have their own, we'll say, how would you like a new mattress? And I won't go into the reasons why. But, so if someone needs to, we've fully furnished all the units in the past. So everybody that went into Cherry Creek Village in the past was considered literally homeless. So we did supply them with the furnishings, and then if they got destroyed, we got rid of them and got new furniture for the new person. As far as the process, so it depends on whether they need it. So if they're coming out of treatment, for example, and they were homeless before they went into treatment, and they've got three children that they've succeeded in reunitifying with, they're going to need everything. So I've been stockpiling for a long time, everything I can get my hands on. So for example, I just went to Scandinavian Designs and bought a bunch of stuff from their outlet store for very little, for, well, less than what I normally would pay for, some really nice stuff. Same thing with all the office furniture. We bought the Office Furniture World. They, they're going out of business, so we got all of our office furniture for them. But we also got other things that would go into the apartments, and we have all that stored now. So in answer to your question, if they need furniture, we provide it, and if they don't, well, then they don't need it. So 24 units, it's not likely that we're going to furnish every one of them.
Perfect. Thank you. Last question, to make the neighbors feel more safe or accepting of this project. What are the safety precautions you put in place for any type of security or eviction processes? How does that work if there's some unruly tenant, and there's a constant problem with one of the neighbors or something along those lines, and, or, you know, police are being called all the time? What do you guys do about it? How do you handle that?
Well, we have, we will have 24-hour property management onsite. That, the old house, that will be where the property manager resides. And we did that strategically so that when some people come in and go, we're going to know. We're going to be able to see it. We're going to have a security system. We're going to have cameras. We'll be able to monitor the system. And if there's an issue, and we see a lot of traffic, which is the way it is now, I mean, we have some, what I refer to as anchor tenants, who will be coming back to Cherry Creek, and they kind of, they're familiar with some of the people you don't necessarily want hanging around, and they'll usually deal with it. But if not, then they will also, they know that it's, call the police. I mean, we have a great relationship with Chief Ferguson and Cloverdale PD, and we really value that. And because one of the things that I have, Jessica knows this, my husband certainly knows this, we may not be able to say you can't, we, let's put it this way. I have no problem calling the police if some illegal activity is happening on any of the properties that we manage. And I think people know that. If, we try to get out in front of the problem by recognizing it earlier, and there's ways to see when people are going off the rails earlier on in the process. And having all of the help that we're going to have now is going to make it that much easier. We may not say, we may not be able to say, for instance, if somebody relapsed, that you have to go to meetings. We won't be able to do that, but we will be able to say, you know, you don't want to lose your kids. You don't want to lose your housing. And oh, by the way, if you bring in- And oh, by the way, if you bring any illegal substances onto this property, or if we see anybody that's bringing those, we have a, we have the police on speed dial, and we have no problem calling them. And that, that's really how we maintain the relationships with the neighbors. And we haven't had, I can't say we've had any problems with the neighbors, not Cherry Creek, not at the Wallace House, not at the two, two NSP houses we have in the neighborhoods that people don't even know they exist. There is, there, we haven't had a lot of that.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for all you're doing.
Very well. Now, I open to the public for any comments or questions. Do we have anybody online? Lori?
I see none, Mayor. Thank you.
Anybody in the public here? Would like, please come forth.
Angela Cordova. I have some questions about this project, and some of it may have been answered a couple of years ago, and I'm hoping that maybe Colleen could answer those questions tonight. You did say there was going to be an onsite manager, I believe. What are the qualifications? Will they meet the criteria to assist the residents that will be living there? Will Cloverdale residents have precedence over other applicants? Are the applicants referrals from programs, the court, the jail, or are they just walk-in, or is it a combination of both? Are there any exceptions to backgrounds? I know violent crimes are out, that's pretty much across the board everywhere, but non-violent crimes and the length of the time from when the conviction happened? If it's like a 10-year-old non-violent crime, for example, are there going to be exceptions? Like the person that, you know, is homeless, that's looking for a place, and he can't find a place because he has an old conviction? Are the, I'm assuming the units are ADA compliant, such as the disabled woman that Mayor Cruz has been helping, and thank you for looking out for that woman? Are those, are there any units or all of them going to be compliant for people that are disabled?
Thank you. Colleen, please.
Okay, where do I start? Okay, well, let's see. Let me start with, I think one of the questions had to do with prior convictions. Let me start with that. We've, Jessica and I have been through this process here, and we're pretty fresh with that subject now, because we, we're involved with these emergency housing vouchers that we're getting, obtaining for people in the community. And I believe we had one person that was denied by the Sonoma County Housing Authority because she had a misdemeanor drug conviction that was within the last three years. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. But then, there's also restriction, that it goes away after seven years?
That's the general.
The general, so three to seven? So, it would kind of depend on where, where the conviction was, when they received the conviction and, and how, how long ago that was.
Colleen, before you go on.
Uh-huh.
Is there an appeal process when a person is denied?
Yes, there is. In fact, this one lady, she could have appealed it through Sonoma County, but she'd already gotten a voucher through the domestic violence at the city of, city of Santa Rosa. So, we didn't bother to go through it, but they did tell us that that would be an easy appeal, because it was, she was just about to get off of probation, and the misdemeanor was three years, almost three years old. So, there is an appeal process. As far as preference, I think I mentioned earlier about the Cloverdale and the different layers, so that's, again, going to be up to the property management company to figure out all that. But we are going to try very hard to get Cloverdale people prioritized. And that's, you know, that's what we do, we try to do anyway. ADA, we, we, all the, well, the buildings are ADA compliant, all on the first floor. We don't have elevators, so the second floors are not ADA compliant, but that wasn't required necessarily. The exercise room, all the meeting rooms, and the property management rooms are downstairs, offices. The common building, communal areas are downstairs, the washing machines are ADA compliant, the exercise machines are ADA compliant. So, we're really focused on the ADA compliance issue, and it's built into a lot of the architectural designs anyway. But yes, and then what did I miss? What else?
The onsite manager, the qualification.
Oh. So, the onsite manager, this person is trained to handle all the HUD income qualification, the initial paperwork. They're trained by the property management company specifically around tax credit authority compliance, HUD compliance, fair housing compliance, and all the regulatory agreements. So, they'll be aware of all that in order to do the screening, and then they do the annual screening as well. And any evictions are handled by them? Is there, what else did you say?
Well, I meant the criteria for the residents of, you know, like you were saying, the traffic in and out.
Uh-huh.
People, you know, like, police are trained to spot, you know, drug activity, things like that. Will this person have any type of background, such as being in recovery, or, you know, signs to look for, that kind of background for this particular complex?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. When it comes time to hire that person, we will be involved. We will very much be involved, because we want to make sure that they're aware of these things and, because, you know, not everybody that's trained in tax credit deals, for example, necessarily is involved in this type of project. They may be senior housing, it may be other types of special needs. Some of them are involved in, you know, home key projects, and that's a whole other area, severe mental illness, and, you know, so, it'll be specific to this particular property.
Did she cover all the questions?
Is that it?
And then, the applicant, can anybody apply? Does anyone off the street? Is there?
Anybody can apply. Not everyone's going to qualify.
Just apply.
But anybody can apply, and when we get ready for lease-up, there will be, we're going to put a banner on the property, and it will have the phone number for the property management company, and that's when the waitlist will open up. There's a perception that somehow we've filled the waitlist already. We haven't even started the waitlist. The only thing that we have done is we, we, we have people that are coming back, or that are at the Wallace House. And they will come in. And then, people who, accepting referrals. We do it, we accept referrals from treatment facilities, we accept referrals from many different places, coordinated entry to some extent. We, we have connections in a number of areas. For example, we might just get a call from a neighbor who says, "I've got this person that I'm trying to help. Can you help them?" And it may be that we need to say, "Well, you know what? They need to go to Arinda Center first and go to treatment," and Todd knows this, this is that how we operate, "and then come back, and we'll have a spot for you." But, you know, in those cases, you know, it's all, all kind of dependent on, on the circumstance. But it, it's a variety, you know? It's, that's why we say this is inclusive housing, and it's inclusionary in the sense that we aren't just restricted to 100% chronically homeless, and we did that by design, because we wanted to make sure that people who were precariously housed slash couch surfers would be eligible. We would have restricted everybody out, for the most part, except for people that probably couldn't qualify, because they would have been individuals if, by the time they're chronically homeless, they burned a lot of bridges with family members, they've, probably the kids are lost in the system, they wouldn't qualify for the bigger units. It would have just been a mess. So, that's a whole other project that maybe we can talk about doing something somewhere else. But as far as this, this is a family project for people who are low-income. Yeah.
Anybody else in the public has any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I have a hand raised.
Please go ahead.
Helen, are you there? There you go.
Helen, you, unmute yourself, please.
There we go. Thank you. I, I am in full support of the Wallace House, or the Cherry Creek Village, and all the work they're doing. I'm curious, how long can residents be residents? And if you get somebody who's a Cloverdale family and they need emergency housing, you're going to have this beautiful village set up, is there going to be open spots for people who need to move in immediately? Or how are you going to deal with, you know, people who need to get in right away, and people who, you know, might need to move on to something else?
So, it's permanent housing, so there's no time limit. This is not a time-limited project. And as far as emergency housing, this is, this is not set up for emergency housing. This, there would be a process, like I said earlier, about doing an application and submitting the application, or getting on the waitlist, just like you would any other affordable housing property.
Any other question, Helen?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other hands?
I see no more. Thank you.
Okay. We'll close public comment at this moment. I want to profusely thank Colleen and Jessica. I have referred more than one person, and they have been very judicious working with these individuals, and they have proven to be very sensitive to the situations of each individual. So, thank you very much. I look forward to more of this collaboration among all the stakeholders in Cloverdale and the region. Thank you very much. This is a very important project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, just a quick comment. I, again, I want to thank you for all your hard work. You've done a fantastic job. The, the onsite manager, to me, is the critical player in this. They're going to be paying attention to what's happening and what's not happening, who's coming, who's going, and if there's anything that looks where it's starting to get, where there may be some problems, at least somebody that's going to notify you. And not, when I say problems, I'm not necessarily speaking criminal. I'm just saying things aren't feeling well, because I'm concerned, a lot of families, a lot of children.
Right.
And we want to make sure it's a safe haven for them. And so, you always worry, but that's where the property manager plays a critical role, and I'm happy that you'll be involved in the selection of that. I'd be interested, just as a point of information, what the job description is, what their duties are as a property manager, you know, besides just checking people in and out, but kind of paying attention day-to-day, and if they see things that look inappropriate, who they report it to, and how that goes about. So, because I think that's kind of the, the important component to keep it as safe.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a highly skilled position.
It is.
It isn't something where you just complete a weekend course and you're a property manager. And they have to have some, some skills.
No, no, and I, I understand that.
Yeah.
That's why, but I know there must be some guidelines and things in writing, and that would be helpful, just so everybody understands.
Right, and, and we're also going to be keen on trying to identify the personality, because, you know, you can get a property manager in there that's going to cause conflict. So, a big, a big emphasis for us is going to be to make sure that we get somebody in there that has firm boundaries, but doesn't alienate and doesn't cause conflict, because that can be, that can be a real problem.
No, and that, that's why it's important that you're involved in that process, getting the right personality.
Right.
The right temperament, and the results that we want.
And we've developed, we've developed a relationship with the property management company, because they've been in discussions ever since we started this, this relationship with Kingdom. They've, they've managed quite a few properties for Kingdom and other developers that Kingdom has worked with, and they, they come highly recommended. And, and she, she and I have talked at length about what we're going to, what we're going to want in the way of those, those skills.
So, so unclear, the property manager, though it's a private contract, they still come under your umbrella as far as?
That's right.
The Wallace House.
Yeah, because...
So, they're ultimately, if the personality doesn't fit, they could be replaced.
Right. So, Wallace House is the managing general partner. We are the developer under this structure.
Right.
So, we get to choose who is the property management company. We have the ultimate authority in terms of hiring and firing, and what, what, what takes place on that property. And we did that intentionally, too, so that we would have that degree of control to, to make those types of decisions and make sure that it was safe. So, in this case, we've got a whole back office for AWI, and we have the onsite person. So, if that onsite person needs some kind of assistance from the back office, they've got an extensive back office. Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Don't sit down yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleen, just one more question. Vice Mayor Lance kind of touched on it a little bit when it came to furniture. Do you do an annual or semi-annual inspection walkthrough of the property?
Oh, yeah. HUD does that. HUD, HUD does that with any Section 8 voucher. So, in this case, especially with project-based vouchers, they do an annual, annual inspection. And then, we'll, we're going to do periodic inspections more, more frequently in situations where we know we've got a problem with, with, or challenge with a particular client, where, for example, they may have some, they may need some help with hygiene, or they may need some help with organization or life skills that, that might otherwise cause them to become evicted, because if the property management company gets involved at that point, I mean, we've had some big challenges at Cherry Creek. We've had people that had hoarding disorder, and it resulted in all sorts of other issues. So, yeah, it's...
Okay.
We're, we're on that.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
Colleen, I'm sorry, I came up with one more question for you. One of our other affordable housing units here in town recently had a fire, and out of the three units, one of them had eight people, one had seven, I think one had five. How are you going to be controlling who's actually living in these units, or are you controlling once somebody's in there? Like, say you had a family of three, are they allowed to bring in and move five more people into that unit?
Well, they'd lose their voucher. They, they, if you have more, you have to get recertified with HUD in order to add family members, and that, those family members all have to, also have to pass background checks. We're, we're going to know who's, who's supposed to be in them, and if somebody else shows up, we've had that situation before, and they've left. They left. And they leave, we, we, we make sure they leave before they get established, because otherwise, after 30 days, you have a landlord/tenant issue. So, we, we're on it in, in that way, too. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I just have one more question, and, and Todd just reminded me. One of the issues in multifamily buildings is that many times, people don't even know how to use a fire extinguisher. Will there be training seminars for people to be able to do first, not necessarily first aid, but to know how to put out a house fire, you know, a kitchen fire, or what to do in times when something backs up and things like that, and you cannot get the, the maintenance person immediately?
Yeah, I mean, that would be part of their move-in process.
Okay.
So, anytime someone moves in, they're given a certain set of procedures and, and safety concerns and, you know, plans. But also, the thing to keep in mind is this, this property is fully, it's got, hello? Sprinklers. We have sprinklers throughout the whole...
Yeah, they could become a problem, too.
Right? But no, that, that would be part of the move-in orientation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I, I feel that orientation is essential, especially for people who have had different kind of housing in the past.
Sure, and, and that would also be part of the, the work that we would do with the case manager. So, getting them used to the, you know, I'd give you an example. At the Veterans Housing, our architect also built the Windsor Veterans, and they actually had to show this person that they had a doorbell. Now, I'm not saying that that will be the situation with us, but it could be. So, not only would they need to know how to use a fire extinguisher, they may need, just need, it may be the first time they've ever been inside for a long time. So, yeah, that's, it's an important part of the, part of the settling-in process.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Well, you could come forth, please. There's one more comment.
My name is Teresa Liddell. I just have a question, like, when are you accepting applications? When does that start? And let's just say you, you know, you have a limited amount of units, but you have a whole bunch of people qualify. How do you prioritize that? And will the, these referrals that come out of the... And will the, these referrals that come out of the agencies that you were talking about, will they get precedence over other people?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the question. So there will be a waitlist and it will be announced when we get closer to completion. So the property management company will say, okay, we're ready. Go ahead. We're, we're that close to lease up because there's, there are timing issues, especially with the tax credit financing, where you have to open the, and fair housing is going to require it. I'm not exactly sure of the date, but my belief is that it's sometime, it's going to be sometime in the February timeframe. So it, so if we expect that we're going to be ready for everybody in, say, April, then a couple of months before that, they'd open up the waitlist. And then it would be a first come, first served basis, depending on the prioritization that's required by the different funding sources. So again, it's, it's this multi-layered thing, but usually it's about two months before. My understanding is that it's going to be sometime in the, that we open up the waitlist sometime in February. Now, the people that are at the Wallace House, or the people who are returning, who are out there in apartments that we found for them in the meantime, they're going to have priority because they're, that's required as part of the relocation when you do one of these projects. But otherwise, I mean, just, you know, stay tuned and anybody that wants to call me, you're welcome to call me. I can provide my contact information. And the same thing with, with a lot of the treatment facilities. They know that we're, we haven't started the waitlist yet, but that, that people were graduating around that timeframe, that they would most likely be eligible and that they should stay close and, and stay in contact.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're moving on to subcommittee items. David? Do we have any subcommittee items that we need to highlight? Or anybody has any subcommittee items to provide?
Madam Mayor, I really opened this up as an opportunity for council to talk about, you know, if there's any items that they'd like to discuss in regards to the subcommittees on which they sit. Otherwise, I'm happy to, to just, you know, recall some items, but it's as you, as you see fit, Mayor.
Any council member?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to request, we used to, some time back, get copies of the minutes from all the different subcommittees. And if that could somehow happen again, I know we can go online, go to the individual ones, but once they're posted, it'd be nice if we could just get them. So then we can follow the topics and what's going on. If we could just have them sent, that would be helpful. So.
Yeah.
If that's not possible, I understand.
I think that, that is definitely something all of us want. I think we should wait until we get our clerk to maybe start distributing some of the information. So in the meanwhile, it's our homework.
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else? Okay, then, subcommittee reports. Finance Administration, December 7th. If you have any items, please bring them forth.
So, Madam Mayor, I think that date's incorrect. It's actually Monday, December 6th at 1:30. So you might check the calendar, David. I think that was a typo. Should be, Monday is on, it's a December 6th.
That's correct.
That's correct. It is, please, Lori, make sure that that is corrected in a minute. It is December 6th. And council members, if you have any issues that you would like for us to add to the agenda, please let us know. Council member Barbie with planning on sustainability?
It's going to be Tuesday, December 21st at 4:00 PM. And I think we've been at the library here too for. So check the agenda when it comes out.
Okay. And is this council member Paula or Walter?
That'll be me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
Public Works, we're going to be meeting on November the 16th. The time says 5 o'clock, but I believe it's 2.
2 o'clock.
Should be the meeting. So if we could make sure we change that going forward as well.
You got that, Lori? Thank you. And joint fire, city, we don't have any meetings scheduled. City and school district?
City School Subcommittee, there is no meeting on November 15th as scheduled. We had to reschedule that meeting and there's no date yet. So there is a special meeting scheduled for November 29th at 4:00 PM. It'll be held in the Maker Space of Clover High School.
And what is this special meeting?
They're giving a presentation kind of along the lines of the funding with all the housing going in and the reasons why they have, you know, pushed for either more money through development or have.
Is that a meeting?
The issue of how many kids are coming in.
Is that something that we're doing or is that something the school district is doing?
The school district is doing it.
Okay, so it shouldn't be here because it is a school district event, sponsor event.
That's why it's not here. It's at the Maker Space.
No, no, but it shouldn't be on this list either.
Well, yeah, Madam Mayor.
It's still a subcommittee meeting. You just had to have a special date.
They're part of the subcommittee.
Yeah, it's still a subcommittee meeting with, with a new date. So it had to be put on as a special meeting.
Okay.
Is that open to the other council members?
The public?
Can we watch it on Zoom?
Zoom, okay.
Okay, I would like some details later.
Okay.
All right. And we are meeting homelessness, December 4th, council, Vice Mayor?
December 14th, 5 o'clock in the Cloverdale Library.
Council reports, verbal reports. I submitted mine in writing.
I submitted mine in writing, but I saw that it didn't get distributed, so I imagine that the clerk.
I guess they did it today.
Really? Oh, I didn't get copied on it. So glad you guys got it. Good.
And I distributed mine in writing as well.
I don't know if mine got there. It was passed.
It did, it did.
Okay. Any informational reports?
No informational reports, Mayor.
Well, I, I don't have any report. I just have an announcement. Is that, yeah. I have an announcement. Tomorrow is Mayor, Coffee with the Mayor at the Senior Center. And we are going to have a guest who is a retired general. And his name is, I want to say it right, it's Andy Gross.
Oh, Andy.
Yes.
He's Air Force.
He's a retired general, living here. He is a very good storyteller.
He'll tell you all about the Pentagon, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, we make sure that we time him too, like everybody tonight. Oh my God. So, and I, I will invite the public to learn more about the closed session that took place today and perhaps discuss a little bit about that. So, well, just enough to say why I voted one way or the other.
Well, it's closed session, so careful.
So Jose will let me know what I can say and what I can't say. So. But since the, you know, the others, who said no and who said yes, so I, I have my reasons. Then, any legislative reports, letter of support or position, any letters of support?
No legislative report, Mayor.
Okay. And Jose? All right. And water, verbal report?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, Mayor. I've, there's been a number of questions by the community, I think in regards to the water shortage emergency. I want to emphasize that while the rains that we've received have been very welcome, we continue to experience, you know, drought conditions because, you know, our reservoir that serves our, the Upper River continues to be significantly below the target levels. I think we're at about 18,000 acre feet at a reservoir level for Lake Minneso. And our target for this time of year is really around 55,000 feet. So we're, we're, you know, between 34 and 36% of normal. So our reservoir levels have, have a lot of room to fill up. And, and so, you know, just want to encourage and support our residents that are doing a great job at water conservation. But despite the rains, the drought continues and hopefully we'll continue to get rain in manageable amounts and we can see our reservoirs fill up. But for the time being, our, our reservoir is still well under the target where we'd like them to be at this time of year. And thus, you know, drought conditions still prevail.
Thank you. And anybody else? And in terms of future agenda items, please make sure to give those to David and I timely. All right, and meeting is adjourned, 8:30. Yay!